As long as it doesn't continue into like March and April.
Good evening, everyone, and welcome to the North Flat City Council meeting here on Tuesday, February fourth, twenty twenty five at five thirty P. M. Of course, we are here in the city council chambers. Calling the meeting officially to order, we have an invocation by Pastor Doug Lee from Two Rivers Fellowship. Pastor Lee, please.
Let's pray. Our heavenly Father, we just thank you for being the almighty and sovereign God, the one that we can look to for guidance and help and strength. Father, we thank you for these men and women who give their time to serve our city as council, as mayor. Father, for those who serve in the departments, we thank you, Father, for their commitment to making our place safer. Father, we have a lot of exciting things coming up, but we need your wisdom, and I pray, Father, tonight for your wisdom for these men and women as they discuss and make decisions. Father, may you be pleased with our conduct as we talk about what we think needs to be done. Help us, Father, to be respectful and kind. Father, help us to feel free to express our thoughts in an orderly way. That you'll be pleased, Father, with us tonight in the name of our Lord Jesus. Amen.
Thank you, everyone. Andrew, roll call, please.
Miss Lee?
Here.
Die?
Here.
Volz?
Here.
Okay.
Here.
Eric?
Here.
Lander?
Here.
Mm hmm.
Here.
Thank you.
Here.
A current copy of the Open Meetings Act is of Nebraska, excuse me, the state of Nebraska is posted on the wall at the back of the city council chambers. The public may address specific agenda items at the pleasure of the mayor. If recognized by the mayor, please identify yourself by stating your name and address. Please address the council through the mayor and limit your remarks. We respect our city employees and request that any complaints or criticisms of employees not be aired in the public meeting. Concerns about employees should be brought to the attention of the city administrator or the mayor. Individuals in violation will be declared out of order. Consent agenda, all matters under the consent agenda are considered by the city council to be routine and will be enacted by one motion. Any city council member may, however, remove an item from consent by request. This might be the shortest consent agenda we've had. Number one, approve the minutes of January twenty one, twenty twenty five. Excuse me, that's one A. One B, place on file treasuries report for December twenty twenty four.
Mr. Mayor, I move the, we approve the consent agenda as presented.
Second.
Motion by Rieker, second by Vols. Calling a question on the consent agenda, please. Consent agenda is passed. That was a nice test of our buttons. We've had a little, the planning commission had a little issue with the voting button similar to the one we had a while back, and so the I T department over the last week or so has gone through and tested. And you will notice on your drawer here that's near your seat, there is a number and a name or two on there. And so on the back of your voting, that number is, that's in the drawer, is the one that you should have. So please check that at the beginning of every council meeting. Make sure someone hasn't been honorary. Traded Mr. Nistley with Mr. Vols or something like that. Okay. Thank you, everyone. Regular agenda. Authorize the Parks and Recreation Department to expend up to blank, and we'll have some information from Lane here shortly on this. In fact, you have it in front of you. From the Keno Fund for renovations to the softball fields at Dowhauer Complex and award a contract to blank, also contained in the information.
I move to authorize the Parks and Recreation Department to expend up to eighty three thousand seven hundred and forty-three dollars from the Keno Fund for renovations to the softball fields at Dowhauer Complex and award a contract to Golf and Sports Solutions.
Second.
Motion by Garrick, second by Vols. Lane, you want to explain what we've got going on here, please?
All right, we went out for bids. Last fall, we had Golf and Sports Solutions. We worked with baseball and did the fields at Centennial Park, baseball fields. They laser leveled, crowned them, and added new dirt that, special dirt that it basically sheds water so you can use it after rainstorms and things. And so we had them and another company looking doing the same thing for the seven fields at Dowhauer Complex, the five main and the two off to the east. And so these are the prices. To do that, there would be some sod removal as far as where the lips are on the fields and getting them back up into shape and also some training, I guess, for Jim and his crew as far as how to continue to keep them that way. I don't know if Jim or I want to add anything to the work we've done to get this to this point.
Now, you know, so I visited with both these companies.
Jim, up front, please. The folks at home will wonder what we're all listening to.
We've visited with both these companies and feel comfortable with either one of them. We do have some experience with G and S over here. The fields need it.
Or as non-baseball nerds, what does laser leveling and crowning actually do to a field?
Yeah, I'd be fibbing a little bit if I told you I knew a lot about that. I've never done it, but it it's going to crown the field so the water drains off better into the outfield. So after a rain event, it'll be able to be played on earlier. And the material he puts down helps absorb some of that moisture. So initially, they were gonna take out the lips, put sod in, but the time of year is not gonna let us, allow us to do that. So now he's talking, we're talking about cutting out that line, coming back in the fall, taking out about ten feet of sod and putting new sod down so the lips are completely gone. But it will help with the summer P V G S A tournaments, baseball tournaments we got in the middle of April, and of course, high school and college games this year. Get us through that. Get us in a better place, and we can start taking small bites out of this and get these fields back to where they should be.
Pete, you're our resident baseball expert. Do you have an opinion?
Yeah, I've spent a number of years up at Bill Wood. We use these guys when we put the new infield down. So the critical aspects of this, and hopefully they'll talk to you about this, but it's continued maintenance, dragging the field properly. So what this field does is, you know, there's actually a heart pan under there. It percolates down and then drains underneath to the outfield. That's where you're getting the crown with the laser level, but it is of utmost importance that the people we have dragging fields and putting the fields to bed, especially in the wintertime, do it properly so that you don't get the blow from the winter. You know, because that field almost, it gets like a crust on there. And then the other really important thing is to give it plenty of water and not put any foreign substance on there, like any foreign dirt or anything like that. So it takes a lot of maintenance, so hopefully they'll train our, our folks to do this. And you work great with Legion, I know you do, and I know you work great with all these other groups, so. So I'm looking forward to this, but yeah, just to have a steady, steady individual or group of individuals who know how to work this field and to get it into shape for each game every day.
Yeah, we need to get with P V G S A and do a better job. I mean, they've always taken care of the infield, and obviously part of the problem is, is the way they've been maintained. We need to learn more about it, and we need to work with them and help them, you know, keep them on track with it, too. And that complex is sitting out in the middle of nowhere, gets a lot of wind. And the game itself, the, the material tends to migrate to the outer edges. And that's something you got to work on in between, in between games and things, but yes, you're, I completely agree with you, yeah.
Great, yeah, so the continued maintenance, we could put two hundred thousand dollars in this field and it could be gone away in two years.
And that's something, yeah.
Maintain this investment, and I got faith in you, thank you, and your group, so thank you. Maintain this investment, and I got faith in you, thank you, and your group, so thank you.
Thank you, sir. Brad?
How much is currently sitting in the Keno Fund?
That's a moving number, and we're using also that for our pickleball and tennis project. There's a little over thirty thousand in there right now, and it comes in around twenty, twenty-five thousand a month. And so by the time this bill would be due, it would be about replenished for that.
Gotcha, so we were doing about thirty thousand a month right now?
Twenty, twenty to twenty-five thousand.
There's thirty, thirty sitting there now.
Thirty something, it's kind of right now.
Other questions or comments?
Mr. Mayor? Okay, I'm gonna preface this question that I love baseball and softball equally, and I have no issues with these Keno Funds on this because I think it's a good use of them. And I'm a professional at losing at Keno, too, so I contribute it.
Thank you for your donation.
You're welcome. Me and many others. In the baseball arena, did we have, did we have some kind of a contribution partnership? Or how did that, how did that work? Are we, are we taking similar financial responsibilities of both complexes? Or could you just talk to us a little bit about how you see that?
So with baseball, this fall, we did, I believe, four fields of baseball, and it was about thirty-five thousand for what they needed because they have a grass infield, so it's a little less material and things. We split that fifty-fifty with baseball, used Keno Funds for that. That's, you know, the single organization Little League, whereas the softball fields, we have PVGSA, we have the traveling teams, we have college softball and high school softball. At this point, we didn't ask for additional contributions for them. Something, there'll be some more maintenance with the sod and things in the fall, maybe would that be a time to approach that? We did not, timing more than anything, we didn't approach them at this time.
I mean, if I'm the Little League board, how do I, how do I feel about that? Not that, again, I support both these complexes, I'm just trying to think through that's the, that balance of private and public. But you're right, the uses are more diverse on these fields, aren't they?
There's seven compared to the four that we did over there.
Yeah, and there's more fields, and the dollars per field are in a similar, similar standpoint, right?
It, it is relevant to mention that how, one of the things that led to the, the path of improving these fields across the whole city was a request from the gentleman that runs the baseball tournaments in April. Right, Lisa?
Yes.
Okay, I have a feeling you'd get up at some point, so go ahead.
I was just waiting for you to hammer things out a little bit. I'm Lisa Burke, I'm the executive director for Visit North Platte. My home address is two four zero seven, zero zero seven East Island Road. I don't know if you knew we had an island in the North Platte, Lincoln County, but we do, so tidbit there. So the reason I'm here is because of sports tourism, and we worked, have worked with Jason Bryant, who does the, the spring baseball team. We've worked with him for five years to build up this tournament that is happening this spring. He's actually bringing in a second tournament, the first part of May. Just to give you some history with that, it's spring, we all know what happens here in North Platte and Nebraska in the springtime. We usually get a downpour, and it always happens the weekend or the day or two before Jason's tournament. And those, they're all volunteers that work these tournaments. They volunteer because they have a passion for the sport, like Pete did, or his child, or your children are involved. And they have spent countless, countless hours out there trying to get the water off the field because they have sixty teams at each one of these tournaments coming to North Platte. Sixty teams times twelve plus baseball players plus parents. That economic impact for that first tournament is over seven hundred thousand dollars for our community. Three days. It's a huge, huge, huge impact. And the one that's happening in May will be the same amount. He's already got, I think he said fifty-eight teams booked for that, and they are, they come from Colorado, Kansas, Wyoming. Very, probably a handful of them are, won't spend the night here, but they'll still come and eat and fill up with gas and shop because the kids don't play twenty-four, seven, or, you know, all, all day. They play one game and then they're off, and then they play another one. So that's just baseball, and he uses the Centennial Park, he uses Cody Park and the Dowhauer Complex for this. So we pulled him together and the mayor and Jim and Lyle and Lane and talked about the condition of the fields. And Coach Franzen with Mid Plains, you know, they have turn up, or excuse me, teams that are coming in also. They're, they start here in a couple of weeks. It's just, you know, the condition of those fields is important and makes their life easier. We don't want to lose the volunteers that are helping us put on these tournaments that help benefit, you know, our community. There's two softball tournaments that are also, one in April and one in May. It's been moved up from Nebraska Land Days Weekend to May, the Buffalo Bill softball tournaments and the Gale Wick softball tournament. Those two bring in, the Gale Wicks will bring in, our estimation is four hundred and eighty-six thousand dollars in economic impact. And the Buffalo Bill tournament is four hundred and eighty-two, so real, real similar. Four tournaments, big, big, big tournaments happening before June eighth. They'll be done, or they'll be, all be done by June eighth, excuse me, between April first and June eighth in our community. So I'm not to mention all the home games that Coach Franzen from Mid Plains Community College is gonna have, the softball, the girls softball, that's in the fall. So it's very important, they all spend taxes or are not spending taxes, or they're contributing to our tax fund. I did a quick figure of what the total economic impact of these four events is two point three million dollars to our community. And the tax, the city tax that's collected in these few months is forty-four thousand dollars. So you're gonna return, get a good return on your investment and lay the seed to make things easier for our families and those volunteers to make these events happen year after year after year. Questions for me?
Just, just one, one little correlation there. The, the main reason for the request to the improve the quality of the infield is that the volunteers, because of the rain, were spending most of the night up trying to get the fields ready and then having to spend all the next day running the tournament. And so it was, was a significant concern that many people were gonna give up on that because they were up for twenty-four or thirty-six hours straight trying to make sure the tournament happened, so.
Jason's afraid he's gonna lose his its volunteer labor, as, as all the tournaments are, because it's, it's parents and families that help, and it's, it's a lot of work.
All right, thanks, Lisa.
Yes, thank you.
Questions or comments from the council? Seeing none, calling the question on item number two, please. Item number two is passed. Item number three, second reading in action on ordinance number four one nine three to amend Title Nine, Chapter ninety, Section ninety point nine nine of the Code of the City of North Platte relating to penalties for the violation of animal control ordinances. Lane, the ordinance, please?
Ordinance number forty-one ninety-three. An ordinance of the City of North Platte, Lincoln County, Nebraska, to amend Title Nine, Chapter ninety, Section ninety point nine nine of the Code of the City of North Platte by revising provisions relating to penalties for the violation of animal control ordinances, repealing all ordinances or parts of ordinances in conflict therewith, and providing for the effective date and publication thereof.
Mr. Mayor, I move to adopt ordinance number four one nine three to amend Title Nine, Chapter ninety, Section ninety point nine nine of the Code of the City of North Platte relating to penalties for the violation of animal control ordinances on second reading.
Motion by Reeker, second by Garrick, is that right? Any discussion on item number three? Seeing none, calling the question on item number three. Item number three is passed. Item number four, adopt the resolution for the twenty twenty-five Nebraska Land Days Parade.
Move to approve the resolution for the twenty twenty-five Nebraska Land Days Parade.
Second.
Motion by Garrick, second by Mcknew. Discussion on item number four. Seeing none, calling the question on item number four, please. Item number four is passed. Item number five and item number six, both have public hearings on them, are on essentially the same subject. So we're going to combine the public hearings and move forward. Mr. Lucas?
Yeah, may I request to excuse myself for the meeting nights? As we spoke, I have a potential for conflict of interest on the majority of the remaining items tonight.
Thank you for attending.
Thank you.
Don't forget your coat, you'll need it. Yes. Have a good nighttime. Okay, so opening a public hearing, and this will be on both item number five and number six. Number five is amend the City of North Platte Comprehensive Plan two thousand and eleven Future Land Use Map, amending certain lands from commercial to medium density, single-family duplex and multifamily on property located at four thousand five and four thousand fifteen West A Street. As a precursor, Judy, you want to give us the layman's terms of what we're talking about here really quick as we start the public hearing? Please.
Mayor and council, so basically what we're doing here with this item is in order to rezone a property, the property has to be in conformance with the comprehensive plan. So a number of years ago, we amended the comprehensive plan to allow this to be commercial, and it was rezoned commercial at that point. Now the applicant is requesting some additional housing versus commercial in this area. So we have to go back, amend the comprehensive plan in order to allow it to be rezoned to residential.
Thank you. That's the next two items, right?
Yes, the amendment and the rezoning.
All right, thank you. Okay, public hearing is open. Anyone has a comment from the audience, please come and approach the microphone. Let us hear what you have to say. Mr. Garrick?
I move to close the public hearing.
Second.
Motion by Garrick, second by Volz to close the public hearing. Calling the question on closing the public hearing, please. Public hearing is now closed. Council will now consider item number five, which is amend the City of North Platte Comprehensive Plan two thousand and eleven Future Land Use Map, amending certain lands from commercial to medium density, single-family duplex or, or excuse me, and multifamily on property located at four thousand five and four thousand fifteen West A Street.
Move to amend the City of North Platte Comprehensive Plan two thousand and eleven Future Land Use Map, amending certain lands from commercial to medium density, single-family duplex and multifamily on property located at four zero zero five and four zero one five West A Street.
Second.
Motion by Garrick, second by Volz. Any discussion on item number five? Seeing none, calling the question on item number five, please. Item number five is passed. Moving on to item number six, as mentioned earlier, we combined the public hearings, so we'll not be doing another public hearing. Item number six, council will now consider first reading in action on ordinance number four one nine four to rezone certain land from a B one neighborhood commercial district to an R three dwelling district located at four thousand five and four thousand fifteen West A. Lane, the ordinance, please?
Ordinance number forty-one ninety-four. An ordinance of the City of North Platte, Lincoln County, Nebraska, rezoning certain lands described as lots three and four, block two, Lakeview First Subdivision, North Platte, Lincoln County, Nebraska, from a B one neighborhood commercial district to an R three dwelling district, repealing all ordinances or parts of ordinances in conflict therewith, providing for the effective date and publication thereof.
You?
Mr. Mayor, I move to adopt ordinance number four one nine four to rezone certain land from a B one neighborhood commercial district to an R three dwelling district located at four zero zero five and four zero one five West A Street on first reading.
Second.
Motion by Reeker, second by Mcknew. Any discussion on item number six? Seeing none, calling the question on item number six, please. Item number six is passed. We're going to, since item number seven is likely to generate some conversation, we're going to reorder and do item number eight real quick here. So council will now consider item number eight, and then we'll go back and consider item number seven.
Move to approve the claims.
Second.
Motion by Garrick, second by Volz to approve the claims. I didn't even, I didn't even get to read it that time, so.
Oh, sorry.
That's right.
Mr. Mayor, I'd like to abstain from paying, from playing the claims.
Let the record show that Mr. Die has abstained from item number eight. Calling the question on item number eight, please. Item number eight is passed. Claims are paid. Moving back to item number seven, adopt the resolution to approve the amended development contract for the North Platte Mall Project and approval of the related actions.
Mr. Mayor, I move to enter a closed session for the sole purpose of discussing contract negotiations in order to protect the public's interest.
Second.
Hold on, I'm thinking procedurally here.
Yeah, I think we have to have a motion on the table.
And no, actually, I don't think we do.
No.
Okay. Okay, so we have a motion for executive session by Reeker, second by Nistley. Calling the question on the motion for executive session. Council is now in executive session, everybody. We appreciate you all being here. This might take a while, so you may want to watch from home your call.
What's going on here?
Want to get my bill?
Why?
I've never seen it.
Like, does anyone know what's going on over there?
He doesn't know what that is.
Oh, yeah, I know.
It's not a flip phone, Nick.
It took a lot of weight.
Okay, after a s- after nearly an hour of discussion and a little bit of harassment regarding Ed's old phone, we let the record show that we had a motion by Voles and a second by Dye to return from executive session at 7:01. And it was unanimous, 7-0, to return from executive session. The council is now back in regular session. And the only thing with discussed was contract negotiations. The harassment regarding Ed's phone came after the end of the session. Had to be sad, Ed, sorry.
Matches my hair.
Okay. When we entered executive session, I had read number seven. I'll read it again, just for clarity. Adopt the resolution to approve the amended redevelopment contract for the North Platte Mall project and approval of related actions.
I moved to adopt the resolution as presented in council materials and approve the amended redevelopment contract for the North Platte Mall project and approval of related actions.
Second.
Motion by Voles, second by Flanders. Already been considerable discussion regarding the item number seven. Does anyone have anything they'd like to quickly add? Go ahead.
I would just like to add that as we worked through this the past couple of weeks, I just want to thank the council and everybody that has worked diligently on this and the people that have worked diligently on this project since 2021. And this is not an easy decision for some of us, and we have taken in a lot of considerations on this project. And I've had the opportunity of talking actually to a family that both are directly and indirectly employed by the mall area and see the benefits from the mall. We are, we're moving in the right direction, and I just want to continue moving in the right direction while we protect the current citizens and look out for the future citizens of North Platte. So just thank you for your time, and thanks, everybody, for the hard work on this from here on out.
Thanks, Nick. Brian?
Yeah, it's from the last meeting, to go back, to be able to read that original contract to where I was sitting. It just didn't sit well with me until I read that. But upon reading that and, and Mr. Works, I appreciate everything you've done for the city and for, for what you're doing over there at the mall. It's, it looks great. It looks outstanding. My family thanks you because, I mean, they're shopping there all the time. So just from reading that contract, it just occurred to me that was a blighted and substandard area. And from what he, from what has been done, that has lessened that. It's lessened the black, that blighted standard, substandard area. It's increased employment. It's, it's brought investment into the city, you know, just not the new stores that we didn't have. But people from outside the town is coming in, spending, spending their hard earned money. They're increasing the public infrastructure, and we're increasing the tax base. So it's being done. And so I just, I just thank you, and I hope this continues, and let's move forward.
Okay, as we do not have our technology, I'm going to ask the city attorney to run a roll call vote. Please indicate a positive by yes and a negative by no.
Miss Lee.
Yes.
Dye.
Yes.
Voles.
Yes.
Garrick.
No.
Flanders.
Yes.
Reeker.
No.
McNew.
Yes.
I have five to two. Motion passes. Public agenda request. We respect our city employees and request that any complaints or criticisms of employees not be aired in a public meeting. Concerns about employees should be brought to the attention of the city administrator or the mayor. Individuals in violation will be declared out of order. At this point in our meeting, we, if anyone who's left in the public would like to make an agenda request, please do so. Mr. Reeker?
Mr. Mayor, I move that we adjourn.
Second?
Motion by Reeker, second by Voles for adjournment. All those in favor, please raise your right hand. The record shows seven to oh, and adjournment meeting is now adjourned. Thank you, everyone. Stay warm out there.